Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, May 23rd, 2022 Regular Session of the Carmel Clay School Board. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam President. Everyone is here and accounted for.
Thank you. Please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we will now move on to our presentation section. We will start with the Carmel Middle School Band, Mrs. Deanna Pittman.
Good evening. I am Deanna Pittman, Principal of Carmel Middle School, and it is my pleasure to introduce to you Mrs. Becky McIlhannon, Department Chair and Band Director of Carmel Middle School, who will be sharing with you a prestigious award that we have received on behalf of the band and introducing our students.
I am Rebecca McIlhannon. The Indiana State School Music, All Music Award is presented to middle school and high school music programs that meet a certain performance criteria throughout the year. The criteria that must be met include: Students from the school performing and receiving a gold rating on a Group 1, 2, or 3 level solo; Students from the school performing and receiving a gold rating on a Group 1, 2, or 3 level ensemble; At least one concert band performing and receiving a gold rating on a Group 1, 2, or 3 level performance at organizational contest; And one jazz band performing and receiving a gold rating on a Group 1, 2, or 3 level performance at organizational contest. I am happy to report that the students of Carmel Middle School Band not only met this criteria for the 2021-2022 school year, but they exceeded these expectations. Mr. Maynard, our other band director, is ill this evening and could not come, but we are so proud of all the efforts of all of our band students in Grades 6 through 8 and want to introduce some of the students who were instrumental in our school receiving this award. They are Gori Arvand, who is an 8th grade oboe player; Daniel Kraft, right here, 8th grade bassoon; Will Engeldau, right over here, 8th grade tuba player; Kate Harding, 8th grade euphonium, right here; Isaac Perrin, 8th grade bassoon, right here; and Jacob Sablehouse, one of our 8th grade percussionists. Could we please give them a round of applause? Thank you to the Board, the CCS Administration, and the Carmel Middle School Administration for all of your support of our amazing fine arts program in our school district.
Congratulations.
Okay, awesome. Uh huh, sure. Do you want me to read their names?
Sure.
Okay.
Gori Arvand.
Congratulations.
Daniel Kraft. Will Engeldau. Kate Harding. Isaac Perrin. And Jacob Sablehouse.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We will now hear from WHGE Intercollegiate Broadcast Systems Award, Mrs. Teresa Ramos.
Good evening. My name is Terry Ramos, and I'm the Department Chair for Media and Communications, and it is my pleasure this evening to be able to introduce you to our department and our students who have achieved this year. But first, I'd like to thank the Board for inviting us here, as well as our administration, and of course, my very own Assistant Principal at the building, Wes Drew. I thank them for all of their support. I just want to say first, before I bring up the first teacher, how grateful I am for these amazing teachers, all four of them in our department, that make up the Greyhound Media Network, have students who have achieved greatly this year and every year. So, thank you to all of you for everything that you do. They come in early, they stay late, and they inspire these students to do the amazing work that they do. They're going to tell you all about their students and what their awards are, and the first person I'll bring up is our very own radio teacher, WHJE 91.3, Voice of the Greyhounds.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Thank you for having us. Really glad to be here. Yes, my name's Dominic James, Radio Advisor, and I'm really delighted to invite the WHJE students, just come and wait down here, guys, please, because you're going to come up on stage in a moment. We've entered, we enter every year, the Intercollegiate Broadcasting System Awards, known colloquially as the IBS Awards, and this year, we won, for the second year running, the Best High School Station in the Nation Award. Thank you. (applause) We have an extraordinary number of students who actually gained first place within the different categories, and there are categories for Best Live Music Broadcast, for Best Play-by-Play for football, for soccer, and so on, best documentaries, all kinds of areas that we cover at WHJE. We have over a hundred radio staff members, and there's a great strength in depth. So, I'm very pleased to say that all these folks over here all won first prize in their various categories. Would you like me to say just their names or what they won? What have we got? Oh, in this order? That would be terrific. We're actually in alphabetical order, guys, according to your last names, so if you'd like to kind of think a little bit about that, that would move things forward. They're radio students, yeah. Okay, first of all, we have Casey Alderman. I don't think Emmy Brown is here. She's actually at a softball sectional this evening, but well done, Emmy Brown. Zach Browning. Sarah Bushu. Joe Cronin. Riley Dugan. Kendall Frobig. Sean Grove. Sean appears to have two there. He's lucky. Caroline Houck. Gabe Perrin. Charlie Pickett. Evan Sanders. Carl Templeton. Kelly Varanka. We have two more students who are unable to be with us tonight, that's Bree Gunz and Sam Hawkins.
Dominic, you want to be in the picture?
Dominic. Dominic, would you like to be in the picture?
Our next teacher for our next program, Brandia Stojic with CHTV.
TV kids, yeah, I see ya. Come on up. Hi, my name's Brandia Stojic. I am the teacher for CHTV, TV classes, and some intro radio classes as well. CHTV is, of course, Carmel's High, Carmel High School's radio station. We produce live announcements every SRT. We also handle live events, live sports, and generally try to cover everything Carmel High School. Our students have created a lot of content for our station, which have resulted in several top awards, also from the Intercollegiate Broadcasting System Awards, usually presented out of New York City. These are CHTV's first, first-place national awards ever, so that's awesome. Looks like you guys lined up. Perfect, thank you. All right, so first, we have Charlie Baker. Next, we have Taylor Brayden. Trevor Bias, he couldn't be here tonight. Also, Scott Kroner could not be here. We have Sam Dreher. Congratulations. Avery Gates. Dylan Horho, he cannot be here tonight. Max Kim. Morgan Mace. Hallie Reeves. Darian Watson. And Jacob Weiner.
Yes. Our next teacher for Pinnacle Yearbook is Claire Burke. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Claire Burke, the Advisor of the Pinnacle Yearbook. Thank you to the Board and for District Administration for having us here tonight. I am incredibly happy to celebrate and recognize the incredible hard work of my Yearbook staffers this year. Already lining up, already a step ahead of me, so. As usual. First, I just want to go through a few staff awards. The 2020 Pinnacle was awarded a Hoosier Star Award from the Indiana High School Press Association. The IHSPA is the governing body of scholastic journalism in the state of Indiana, and it's kind of like winning a journalism state championship. The 2021 Pinnacle is also a finalist for this year's award, receiving a superior rating from IHSPA. We'll find out about that in October. Secondly, the 2021 Pinnacle was rated a first-class publication with two marks of distinction from the National Scholastic Press Association, the equivalent of IHSPA, but on the national level. Finally, I'd like to recognize our 10 graduating seniors this year. These incredible staffers have put in countless hours over their three years, literally hunched over in design and taking photos, generally creating all of the content for our 496-page Yearbook and 48-page spring supplement every year. Incredibly proud of them, and they made it through three COVID years, which is no small feat. First up, we have Keely Britton. Chris Carmichael. Jules Everett. Naomi Grossman, one of the editors-in-chief this year. Our other editor-in-chief, Sophia Hannah. Iman Hassan. Taylor Ryan. Annie Salter. And additionally, I recognize Haley Papakaralambas and Shope Koya, come on up, for their three years of service to the staff as head reporters. Thank you so much. I appreciate all of the work these students have put into the Yearbook. Congratulations on your graduation, guys, and I look forward to everything that you're sure to accomplish.
Last but not least, the Highlight Newspaper Advisor, Jim Streisel.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to recognize some outstanding students. My name is Jim Streisel, and I am the Advisor of the Highlight News Staff at Carmel High School, and it is my privilege tonight to recognize the Highlight Staff for earning top honors in every single state and national competition it entered. Fun fact, this actually marks the second consecutive year for this to occur in my career, and the fifth time in the past 10 years. These awards, which reflect the work from the 2020-21 staff, include the following: A 10th consecutive National Scholastic Press Association Print Pacemaker Award. The NSPA Pacemaker is often called the Pulitzer Prize of Scholastic Journalism because of its prestige. A 5th consecutive NSPA Online Pacemaker Award. A 3rd consecutive Indiana High School Press Association Hoosier Star Award, it's the 12th Hoosier Star in the past 13 years. An IHSPA Website Hoosier Star, it's the first time the IHSPA has given this award. And most recently, a 2nd consecutive Columbia Scholastic Press Association Gold Crown, and the 7th Gold Crown in the past 10 years. To put this into perspective, to earn even one or two state or national awards in a 10-year span is an accomplishment and is something to be celebrated. To earn three, or four, or five shows a trend. To earn 40, that's 4-0, top state and national awards in the past 10 years, as the Highlight Staff has done, represents a culture, a culture of commitment to the readers of Carmel High School, a commitment to inform, educate, and entertain those readers at the highest possible level. And that tradition of excellence continues. As reading habits change, we must change with them, and next year, the Highlight will be completely online. So, it is my pleasure to inform you that the 2021-22 Highlight Staff just earned its first award, a 6th consecutive NSPA Online Pacemaker, which was just announced last month. And with that, it is my honor to recognize the Highlight Senior Management Team, many of whom have other commitments tonight, which is here on behalf of the 70, nearly 70-member Highlight Team. Present tonight, first is Anaket Biswal. Next, we have Emily Sandy, Managing Editor. One of our two co-editors-in-chief, Chloe Sun. Unable to attend tonight are Samya Chundi, Daniel Kim, Leah Tan, Riley Turbush, and the other co-editor-in-chief, Katie Armstrong. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks.
I just want to thank you for being here. Come on over.
Thank you so very much. We will now move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. Public comment shall be guided by the rules notated in the handout that everyone received this evening under the Public Comment Guidance. I would like to point your direction to a couple of these. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer, myself, and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation if appropriate. They may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. They shall be directed to us, the Board, and no person may address or question individual Board members. As a general matter, the School Board will not act on or respond to questions or comments, but we will definitely take them under advisement and appreciate you coming to share. But per Board bylaw, speakers will be chosen by random drawing, and I have the numbered registration cards that you signed up with when you came. Dr. Dudley will call out two numbers at a time. The first will speak, and the second will be on deck. When your name is called, please go to the microphone and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. We have a timer on the stage, so you can gauge your time. We have a slated 30 minutes total for public comment, and that countdown timer will be on the screen. I want to thank you so much for participating. Dr. Dudley, will you tell me the first two numbers?
Yes, thank you. Our first number is number two, and the person on deck would be number three.
Jennifer Pope Baker and Danette Howard.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Pope Baker. I'm a parent of a graduate and a junior for two more days. Good evening, Dr. Bearisford, President Browning, and members of the School Board. It has been a week since the Black Student Alliance at Carmel High School discovered they were erased from the 2021-2022 Pinnacle. They arrived, excuse me, they arrived at school last Monday morning feeling the trauma of the racist terrorism in Buffalo, and instead of finding refuge or comfort at school, they were faced with the audacity of this omission. The response from CHS Administration is the biggest slap in the face of all. It makes the incident far worse than the omission in the Pinnacle. The belief that reprinting the BSA page and handing it out to students would make up for this error is an incredible insult to every Black student, their families, and those who strive to be their allies. Additionally, this response has emboldened the students and families who are very comfortable in their white supremacy. I understand this is a student-run publication, and there are all kinds of lessons to be learned from this blatant act of dismissal by both the students on the Pinnacle staff and the faculty that supervise the creation and editing of their Yearbook. However, too much attention is being placed on the hard work and feelings of the Yearbook staff and not enough on the lives and the feelings of the Black students and their families. Through my participation in the CCS DEI Committee, I learned that parent comments and actions were not wanted on this. The plan was for the DEI staff person to work with BSA to see what they wanted to happen. While some say this is centering the voices of Black students, in reality, it is unfairly putting the weight of resolution on the young people who are sitting in the trauma of the flagrant disregard of their existence. They should not be expected to right the wrongs that have been foisted upon them. It is like asking a child what they want to happen to the bully who takes their lunch every day, and then having the child's decision broadcast to the entire school. How anyone could expect the BSA to take a bold stand on this when they would be vilified by all the people who are blasting them with incredibly insensitive and inappropriate comments on social media last week. And I'm going to share with you just a couple samples that were on the key Carmel Clay Schools inclusive Facebook page, the very people who are supposed to be aligned with diversity in our school system. This was an innocent mistake. The students on Yearbook worked so hard. The Yearbook students are progressive, and many are LGBTQ, so they wouldn't do it on purpose. It costs too much money to reprint. It's a waste of paper to reprint. It'll take too long to reprint, and Black people are being too sensitive and just need to chill out. The only right thing to do is to reprint the entire book. It'll be expensive. It'll be, use more paper. It will take a long time. However...
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Howard.
Good evening. My name's Dr. Danette Howard, and I'm here to share my perspective on the exclusion of the Black Student Alliance from the Carmel High School Yearbook. I'm a mother of two children in elementary schools here in the district. Until very recently, I was a member of the district's DEI Parent Advisory Committee, and I resigned as a result of the district's handling of this very issue. And I'm a nationally recognized expert on racial equity, and currently serve as an executive in residence at the University of Southern California Center for Race Inequity. To get right to the point, the district's response to this admission, which was to print a supplemental insert that can be distributed to students, is unsatisfactory and insufficient. I've been told that the district's stance is that other groups have been omitted in the past, and this is how those situations have been handled. However, we're talking about the Black Student Alliance, a group that exists at a high school where African-Americans represent less than 4% of the student body, in a city where African-Americans represent only 2.73% of the city's population, and in a place that has a history of being unwelcoming to those who, like me, identify as Black. So, given this nation's sordid history and unresolved history with race, leaving the BSA out of the Yearbook is not the same as forgetting other groups, like the AV Club or the Drama Department, or even the Yearbook staff itself. It's wholly different and should be treated as such. In fact, I'm sure you all know that the very definition of equity is not treating all people or every situation exactly the same, but providing the treatment or intervention that is necessary to achieve the most desirable outcome, even if that intervention is different or provided in different dosages. The only right thing to do in this instance is to reprint the entire book, period, full stop. I've heard that there's resistance to a reprint because of the cost. Maybe it would be $100,000 or even more than that to support the reprint. And let's say that there's just no way that the district could come up with that money, although I don't believe that that is true. There are enough people out there who are sickened over this omission, and I am certain that you could probably raise the funds in about 24 or 48 hours. Today, I led a session with over 70 college presidents on how to navigate resistance to racial equity with Board members and trustees, and I used this Yearbook situation as an example of what not to do. But it's not too late to do the right thing and make this right. We say that we're a district that values equity and holds it as a high priority, that wants to recruit more diverse teaching staff and more diverse families to our schools. Well, Board members, well, Dr. Bearisford, now's the time to do more than talk the talk. You've got to walk the walk. Think about the message you're sending to our students about what matters. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker tonight is David Roswell.
Hello, my name is David Roswell. I'm a parent, had three children go through the Carmel High, Carmel Clay School system. Thank you to the Board. My question is in regards to state and federal grants in regards to electric vehicles and electric vehicle chargers. I'd like to engage with the Board...
comments on social media last week. And I'm going to share with you just a couple samples that were on the Keep Carmel Clay Schools inclusive Facebook page, the very people who are supposed to be aligned with diversity in our school system. This was an innocent mistake. The students on yearbook worked so hard. The yearbook students are progressive, and many are LGBTQ, so they wouldn't do it on purpose. It costs too much money to reprint. It's a waste of paper to reprint. It'll take too long to reprint. And Black people are being too sensitive and just need to chill out. The only right thing to do is to reprint the entire book. It'll be expensive. It'll use more paper. It will take a long time. However--
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Howard.
Good evening. My name's Dr. Danette Howard, and I'm here to share my perspective on the exclusion of the Black Student Alliance from the Carmel High School yearbook. I'm a mother of two children in elementary schools here in the district. Until very recently, I was a member of the district's DEI Parent Advisory Committee, and I resigned as a result of the district's handling of this very issue. And I'm a nationally recognized expert on racial equity and currently serve as an executive in residence at the University of Southern California Center for Race Inequality. To get right to the point, the district's response to this admission, which was to print a supplemental insert that can be distributed to students, is unsatisfactory and insufficient. I've been told that the district's stance is that other groups have been omitted in the past, and this is how those situations have been handled. However, we're talking about the Black Student Alliance, a group that exists at a high school where African-Americans represent less than 4% of the student body, in a city where African-Americans represent only 2.73% of the city's population, and in a place that has a history of being unwelcoming to those who, like me, identify as Black. So, given this nation's sordid history and unresolved history with race, leaving the BSA out of the yearbook is not the same as forgetting other groups like the AV Club or the Drama Department or even the yearbook staff itself. It's wholly different and should be treated as such. In fact, I'm sure you all know that the very definition of equity is not treating all people or every situation exactly the same, but providing the treatment or intervention that is necessary to achieve the most desirable outcome, even if that intervention is different or provided in different dosages. The only right thing to do in this instance is to reprint the entire book. Period. Full stop. I've heard that there's resistance to a reprint because of the cost. Maybe it would be $100,000 or even more than that to support the reprint. And let's say that there's just no way that the district could come up with that money, although I don't believe that that is true. There are enough people out there who are sickened over this omission, and I am certain that you could probably raise the funds in about 24 or 48 hours. Today, I led a session with over 70 college presidents on how to navigate resistance to racial equity with board members and trustees, and I used this yearbook situation as an example of what not to do. But it's not too late to do the right thing and make this right. We say that we're a district that values equity and holds it as a high priority, that wants to recruit more diverse teaching staff and more diverse families to our schools. Well, board members, well, Dr. Beresford, now's the time to do more than talk the talk. You've got to walk the walk. Think about the message you're sending to our students about what matters. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker tonight is David Roswell.
My name is David Roswell. I'm a parent, had three children go through the Carmel Clay School System. Thank you to the board. My question is in regards to state and federal grants in regards to electric vehicles and electric vehicle chargers. I'd like to engage with the board sometime in the next couple of weeks because there are several grants available that, as far as I'm aware, the Carmel Clay School System has not applied for, and these grants would be well over $1 million that could be awarded to Carmel Clay School System in regards to installation of electric vehicle chargers at public schools and also the supply of electric vehicles. So my question to the board is, are you aware of these grants? There'll be further grants coming available in the next couple of weeks, and the current grants only have a couple of weeks before the deadline expires. So I'm reaching out to the board to try and engage with you to help you apply for these grants. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now move on to the consent portion of our evening. Do I hear a motion to approve consent? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. We will now move on to action items. I gotta get to the right place. Too many papers. Thank you. Action item 5.1, authority to hire certified and non-certified staff and accept resignations immediately from May 24th, 2022 through August 22nd, 2022. Dr. Michael Beres.
Let's recommend the board give authority to myself and Dr. Ostrom to hire both certified and non-certified staff and accept resignations immediately from May 24th of 2022 to August 22nd of 2022. And we're requesting the board to give that authority to hire staff so that we can hire both certified and non-certified staff immediately and also accept resignations immediately through that time period. The purpose of the request is to accelerate the hiring process over the summer. Personnel hired or resigning during this time will be immediately reported to the board and appear on the personnel report at the next board meeting. So really, the whole purpose of it is so that we can, as staffing gets pretty aggressive in the summertime, that we can get all of our positions filled, and this will greatly help us to release teachers and then also to hire new folks coming in.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. Any discussion? Hearing none, will now take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move on to 5.2, materials adoption. Dr. Amy Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening, I bring to you for action several materials that we are recommending for adoption in the Departments of Family Consumer Science, Engineering and Technology, World Language, and our Middle School Life Skills Program. So these materials have all been vetted through a committee as they looked at the program evaluation process and then curriculum development and then looked at materials, what materials would support the standards the best that they could be supported. And so these materials I bring to you for action.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve materials adoption? Thank you, Ms. Vandenberg. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? Will now take a vote. All those in favor of approving materials adoption, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. We'll now move on to 5.3, 2022-2023 school meal prices. Mr. Roger McMichael.
Thank you. We have not raised meal prices for the past five years. The last time was 2017, and we're recommending a 15-cent increase in the meal price for two reasons. One is, as we're all aware of, the high inflation that we've had the last two years and particularly this year. But also, there is a federal requirement under the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010, which requires the school district to increase meal prices in order to decrease the price gap between the meal reimbursement at the federal level versus what we're charging. And so, for example, our elementary lunch price currently is $2.45, and the secondary is $2.65, but the reimbursement rate from the federal government is $3.58. So we've managed to, we have sought and been granted a waiver, which is why we haven't increased the prices for the last five years. But at this point, the combination of that and really primarily the inflation rate, we are recommending a 15-cent increase for 2022-23.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the school lunch prices? Thank you, Ms. Vandenberg. Second? Thank you, Ms. Jackson. And then I have it on here, just kind of for note, elementary lunch is currently $2.45. It would move to $2.60. Secondary is $2.65 and moved to $2.80. Breakfast is $1.35 and moved to $1.50. Adult is currently $3.40, and we're actually going to change that to à la carte because it'd end up being cheaper if my understanding is right.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Is there any other questions from the board? Mr. Kirschner?
Katie, I just think that we're going to point out that this is coming before us the first time, and we're going to suspend our normal rules because this is required by federal law. So just point of clarification.
Thank you for bringing that up. Correct. All right. Anything else? Yeah, Ms. Vandenberg?
I'd just like to add that I know we have not paid for school lunch in two years, so that has been a huge benefit. So the 15 cents, even though that will add up over time, I have more than benefited from the free lunches the last two years, from the federal government, not because we just haven't charged people.
Thank you. All right. We will now take a vote. All those in favor of approving the school lunch prices for next year, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. We will now move on to change orders for Clay Center, Carmel Elementary, Murray Soccer Stadium, and Hartman Baseball Complex, the CLLC HVAC Equipment Replacement. Mr. Roger McMichael.
Thank you. I'd recommend that you take these as a group. However, if you do so, you certainly can ask any questions that you would like with regard to a specific change order.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the change orders 5.4 through 5.7? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. And that was Ms. Williams. Yeah. Sorry. And any discussion? Okay. We will now take a vote. All those in favor of approving the change orders 5.4 through 5.7, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. We will now go on to the adoption of Policy 8120, Background Checks for Visitors and Volunteers. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening, I bring to you the second reading of Policy 8120, Background Checks for Volunteers and Visitors. And there's just one small change in this policy in the last sentence of the policy. It talks about access to classrooms and lunchroom, and the policy committee is proposing that you change that to access to areas in the building to make it the entire building, not just the lunchroom and classrooms.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve adoption of Policy 8120? Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. A second? Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Is there any discussion? Okay. Will now take a vote. To approve adoption of Policy 8120, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Ms. Vandenberg, did you? Yes. Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. All right. We will now move on to the discussion items tonight. 6.1, materials adoption. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening, for discussion, I bring to you part two of materials adoption. We've been busy this year looking at program evaluation and materials adoption with our committees, and one of the reasons that we have so many this year is we've been out of sync because of COVID and some other areas where we could not bring large groups together to meet to review those materials. So in part two of our materials adoption, I have materials in the Business Department, our English and Language Arts Departments, Social Studies Departments, and our Early Childhood Department. And so all of these materials, again, went through the program evaluation process, then to looked at curriculum writing and the development of that curriculum, and then looked at what were those materials that best supported the curriculum based on the Indiana academic standards. And so before you, I have quite a lengthy list of those materials that the committees are recommending for adoption.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you. Item 6.2, the first reading of bylaw 0167.3, public attendance and public comment at board meetings. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So the policy committee reviewed this bylaw in lieu of Senate Bill 83, which the state legislature passed, a law stating that, starting in July, that at all school board meetings, school boards need to allow public comment. Carmel Clay Schools, we have always allowed public comment during our board meetings. That was a longstanding practice that we had. But a couple of the changes that are in this policy is, we've always done public comment at our regular business meetings, which is this meeting typically the fourth meeting of the month, but the policy now will allow us to have public comment at our workshop meetings as well that is typically the second meeting. The difference between the two is that the workshop meetings, the public comment would be on agenda items only, and at the regular business meeting, the public may comment on any topic that they would choose to comment on. Also, another change is, we want to allow all of our patrons to be able to participate in public comment. However, we will be breaking our patrons into two groups. The first group will be our Carmel Clay students, Carmel Clay parents, Carmel Clay residents in the community, and also Carmel Clay staff. They would all be placed in Group 1. And then Group 2 would be any patron that is not in Group 1. So when we look to our public comment, we will first look at Group 1 to participate and then Group 2 to participate. We'll still continue with the three-minute time limit for the public comment and a 30 minutes overall for public comment.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Mr. Kirschner?
I would just like to thank Dr. Dudley for her leadership of the policy committee and for her distinct summary of the changes that we're making to remain in compliance with Indiana law.
And the only other thing I know is that we're changing it from 10 minutes prior to 15 in order to be able to establish the groups and the thing that you mentioned.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. We look forward to this at a future meeting. The first reading of Policy 8310, public records.
Yes. And so this policy, there's not changes in this policy, however, we are getting more and more requests for public records, and we wanted to make sure that our policy was very clear so the public could understand exactly what is a public record, what they can request, and what we would share with that public record. So Mr. McMichael looked at this policy to make sure that it was in line with the law, and then we shared this also with our attorneys, and they gave us feedback as well to make sure that we are in alignment with the law. We added some definitions to the policy that were not previously in the policy so that it's right there for the public to be able to understand exactly what it is that they can ask for.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dudley. We will now move on to Dr. Dudley again for the student data report.
Okay. So this evening, I do have a short report on our summer professional development opportunities. And so many times, people ask, what do educators do over the summer? It must be nice to be a teacher because you have the whole summer off. So, but in addition to our educators taking a well-deserved vacation, the dedicated teachers and administrators and staff in Carmel Clay Schools go well above and beyond to improve their craft in participating in the summer professional development that we offer over the summer. So each summer, Carmel Clay Schools offers an extensive list of professional development opportunities for our teachers, our administrators, and our staff, and they're very excited to participate in these, and I just wanted to share some of those offerings. So we have a wide variety of different topics that are available for our teachers to continue to improve their craft, and these sessions focus on topics pertaining to literacy, math, science, and STEM, social studies, social-emotional learning, diversity, equity, and inclusion, technology integration, teacher evaluation, and also special education. I'd like to highlight the teacher evaluation piece of it with, as Dr. Ostrom shared at our last board meeting, an update on where we're at with teacher evaluation. We've had a long pilot as we've looked to change our teacher evaluation, and in this next year, we will be adopting our new teacher evaluation, starting at our elementary level. And so our teachers will have the opportunity to come to different sessions to learn more about that this summer, so they have 10 different sessions that they can come to over the summer. And we're very excited that the teachers have already signed up for them. Several of those sessions have already closed because we have so many participants in each of them. And the sessions, we offer these sessions in a variety of different formats. So we offer workshops and the very traditional workshops in person where our teachers come and participate either over at our administrative buildings or out in other buildings across the district where there's a facilitator and they get to interact in live with each other. We offer these sessions as morning sessions, afternoon sessions, full-day sessions, as well as evening sessions. We have many teachers that really take us up on those evening sessions where they don't need to have childcare because their spouse would be able to watch the children, and so they can come in those evenings. And so they're a very popular timeframe. We also have workshops that are virtual as well as blended, so they have the opportunity to work, you know, online using Canvas or other online tools. And in some cases, they're doing both online, and then they're doing some that is live as those workshops. We also have several virtual courses which are guided, so some of them are synchronous, so they're in real time, but they're using Zoom to work on that workshop. And then we also have some self-paced courses where the teachers can go in as they have time over the course of the summer and do that self-paced or self-guided interacting with the content. We have a variety of different book studies that are both blended and self-paced, so we have several that are live and have a series of different book studies, and then some that are self-paced where they can interact virtually with each other. And then we are also offering, we've put all of our teachers and our administrators, we've enrolled them in a virtual conference through CIESC, our service center. They are offering a second annual virtual conference, which they are entitled Keep Indiana Learning, and they have the opportunity to have two full days of a virtual conference where they have national speakers, they have hundreds of breakout sessions where they can interact with other educators across the entire state. And then they also, many of these sessions are recorded, and so our teachers will have access to these recorded sessions for an entire year after this. Last year, many of our teachers participated in this, and then they also had access when they wanted to go back and say, oh, what did they talk about in that workshop? They could go back and see those recorded sessions over the course of the year, and we went back to them several different times. So it was a great value for our teachers and our administrators. And so just to sum up with some numbers here, we have, so far, we have 1,096 educators, Carmel Clay educators, that are registered for at least one session. We have 35 of our Carmel Clay staff members, so they are our teachers, our instructional coaches, our administrators that will be facilitating different workshops this summer. We are offering 122 workshops in-house, so that's in a variety of those different frameworks that are Carmel Clay sections, and then we have 108 virtual conference sessions that our teachers have the opportunity to participate in. So we're so excited that our teachers want to continue to learn and grow over the summer and really go deeper into the craft of teaching because that is an ongoing piece that all of our educators continue to work at. And so we're excited that we can offer this for them, and they definitely-- And so we're excited that we can offer this for them, and they definitely take us up on it. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Questions from the board, Ms. Bannenberg?
Dr. Dudley, are there any fees associated with this professional development?
So everything that we offer in-house in Carmel Clay Schools, there are no fees associated at all. With our partnership with CIEC, we get so many professional development hours that we pay for with our pricing with CIEC. And so we use that to enroll all of our teachers into that. So our teachers do not have to pay any fees for that either.
Dr. Dudley, thank you so much. Do you sound like excellent programs? Are the teachers or educators compensated in any way when they come during their summer?
No, unfortunately, we do not compensate our teachers for coming. They come because they're so dedicated and they want to continue to improve their craft. And that's why we try to make it as, the opportunities as easy as we can to make it accessible to them.
And is there any childcare available during those hours if they chose to come in person?
No, we do not have the childcare. And that's why we have the different times for the sessions so they can make what works best for them.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Any other board questions? Thank you, Dr. Dudley. We will now move on to the monthly financial update. Mr. Roger McMichael.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'm pretty proud that I got that working. Okay, so we're through, excuse me, four months of the calendar year, beginning with our education fund, our referendum, and our rainy day funds. We now have a cash balance of a negative $85,000, and that's very typical. Anyway. Now, when we compare that to 2021, our balance by April was 700, almost $800,000. However, that's primarily two reasons. One is, is a year ago, we had about $1 million more money in our rainy day fund, which to a great extent, we used that later with the COVID stipend, if you'll recall, that we paid. And then also, as our referendum fund gets larger, and since we receive that essentially twice a year, we're receiving almost $2 million a month. So by April, that's almost $800,000, or $8 million that we haven't received yet, but we will receive it when we receive our tax draw. So we're really right on target with our estimates. In fact, we're actually a little bit ahead when you make those adjustments. In our operations fund, this is entirely supported with property tax and local taxes. Thus, we're showing a $5.2 million deficit. And last year, to compare, we were almost $4 million deficit. So again, when you consider that all of this is referendum funding, that has, will increase each year, it's about where we would expect. You can see here then the rainy day fund. Our current balance is almost 1.5 million. Excuse me, and last year it was 2.1 million. So that's primarily the difference when we combine those funds. So with that, I'll respond to questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Kirschner?
Thank you, Roger. I know you already hit on it. I just want to clarify that it's a timing question why we're negative balanced because we only get paid the property tax payments in May and November and then, you know, the months thereafter.
That's right.
So as we've seen in years past, there'll be a bump up, and then we'll go back down. So we get to November, and then by the end of the year, we'll even out.
Which is why we tend to focus on a June 30th balance more so than a January or December 31st balance.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to Board Member's Report. Ms. Bannenberg, Legislative Update.
I wrote it all out because it's fairly comprehensive, but I'm not doing all of it. So I do want to say that although this was our short session, it was anything but short and sweet. It began with over 140 significant school-related bills. We ended with about 35 school-related bills. Some will impact Carmel Clay Schools more significantly than others. And it is worth noting that tomorrow, May 24th, which somehow this has escaped me in the past, but tomorrow is the Indiana General Assembly Technical Corrections Day. And that is the day that our legislators come back together to correct any technical errors, spelling tabulations, formatting, grammatical errors. And also, they can address any vetoes. And it is expected that they're going to look at House Bill 1040, the transgender bill. There is no guarantee, but that is the rumor that's out there is that they will take a look at that tomorrow on the Technical Corrections Day. Several enrolled acts have some overlapping subject matter, and so I'm going to include those together. And the bills that did pass range from human resources, student services, operations, as well as school finance. It's worth noting as well, we get a lot of our information with these updates from the Indiana School Board Association, our general counsel with Church, Church, Hiddle and Antrim, as well as KGR with their legislative updated services. And like I said, I'm just going to cover a few. Two are fairly comprehensive, but in total, there's just four. The first one, House Bill 1,001, I'm not really touching on. That's the COVID-19 immunizations and updates for school districts. We're following protocol. And there really isn't any changes that that law puts into effect that impacts us directly. We've got House Bill 1,002, which is various tax matters, comprehensive. But the takeaway for that is that money's being transferred. Excess funds are being transferred to the Teacher Retirement Fund, which is great for our teachers and staff. And while there isn't a tax cut, the rate will drop slightly if certain conditions are met over the next four years. We, as a board, and Dr. Dudley and the legislative, the policy team have already addressed public comment. House Bill 1130 and Senate Bill 83 addressed the electronic virtual board meetings as well as public comment at board meetings. I'm addressing them in tandem because there is a lot of overlapping language. The big one for Senate Bill 83 is that we can have electronic board meetings with no board members present only if we have a state of emergency that has been declared, either a state or local one, and if meeting, there's all these parts. And we have to be sure that meeting would pose imminent risk to patrons as well as the board. And we have to have at least one school closed completely for this outbreak. So I guess we're wishful thinking this won't ever happen, but there are some provisions should we need to make that happen. Also, the governing body permits public comment on topics before we take final action. House Bill 1130 also allows board members to, we can have our electronic meetings. It also gives the public an opportunity, should we desire, to have public comment during a virtual meeting. They also, though, which is quite nice at this point, they give us the ability to limit the time for comment and a way to address patrons who are unruly. So that is written into law. The couple other things, the next two House bills, very, very comprehensive. House Bill 1251, Various Education Matters. The only parts that I'm going to talk about are ones that really impact us most heavily. One topic that I learned about, the adjunct teacher permits. And that will affect us through HR. This is an agreement outside of the collective bargaining for school systems to hire individuals to help teach that don't necessarily have a regular teaching contract. We just enter an agreement with them. What I found interesting, though, is this individual who we would hire in this manner, they can have more than one contract, so they can work for other school districts as well. There are several layers to this agreement, but that is one big thing. Another item in this particular bill, which is called Various Education Matters, there are these student enrichment grant programs. And it's a one-time grant to enrichment students beginning September 1st of '22. And they're $500 to $750 per grant, but it's a one-time grant. And it has to be used on educational manners to help enrich students, and only certain students qualify for that. So that is something that our administration will need to look at. And it also amends the definition of what is considered appropriate school transportation vehicles, and it expands that criteria. I don't know that that's really going to impact us whatsoever with regards to our busing situation, but it did expand what that criteria is. During this session, there was a big emphasis on early learning. And they define early learning from birth to kindergarten. So this might be an opportunity for us as a school district to expand what we do if finances permit. And it did suggest, or it has been suggested, that there'll be an even greater emphasis moving forward. So House Bill 1039 has several provisions in it expanding what early learning is. It includes some deregulation in order to support the workforce development program across the state. It expands what the advisory committee looks like. It adds additional uses for the Indiana Secured School Fund. We also have additions with this particular House bill. It changes the definition of what a school resource officer is. It adds language that schools must enter into a memorandum of understanding with law enforcement agencies, so that's something we'll need to look at. I'm not sure that it impacts us directly, but that is something Dr. Beresford and his team will have to look at since we do work directly with the Carmel Police Department. I don't know if we require an MOU with this relationship or not, but this law does, it implies we might. Something very interesting, and I know we don't do this, but other school districts apparently were giving incentives to students, monetary incentives for attendance, and that is against the law. So FYI. And they put it in law. Big thing in 1030, or 1093, they further define what a virtual school day is and what virtual school days will count towards the 180 days. So, and if we go beyond the 180 instruction days, or if we have less than that, we will need to apply for a waiver. They are really shying away from using virtual days to supplement in teacher service days. So providing professional development. I know several school districts, not ours, but several local school districts have three or four built-in professional development days where their students don't come to school, and they have virtual classes. And these asynchronous classes are no longer going to count unless they apply for a waiver and get permission. One other part of 1039, which we will have to think about moving forward, and I'm assuming Dr. Beresford and his team has looked at this, but it was new to me. When our families, or when the teachers get the results from the standardized testing, statewide standardized testing, it is law now that they have to discuss the results during a parent-teacher conference. And if we do not have a conference, they need to reach out to the families and provide an opportunity should families want to discuss the results of the test. It used to be required for only students who didn't do well. Now it's required across the board for all students. So that is something that we'll have to think about and be sure that we share that with all of our professional educators. And 2021, '22 school year, there are no grades. So our school districts and schools will not be receiving a grade, which is not a bad thing because it really has been a year in flux. And for now, that is all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions from the board? Thank you. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Beresford.
Thank you very much. Good, very good night tonight. Got to see a lot of talented kids and another hero. That's our second staff member who has saved a child who was choking. And I just really appreciate the expertise and our folks that are, know what to do in a tough situation like that. So it was very, very well done. I'm going to try to go a little bit quick, but this is a time of year where there's just a lot going on. And so I think Emily came up with the title of Out and About with Dr. B. Because I got to, I was running around quite a bit this last couple of weeks. But I think I'll start by talking about Hoosier hysteria at West Clay where Dr. Dudley and I teamed up with Jill Ship, the principal. This is the principal Catherine Piersall, and the head custodian, John Groves. And we were a team that took on the fourth graders. And it was in the format of, are you smarter than a fourth grader? And the topic was Indiana history, which of course is a big standard in elementary school fourth grade. And we gave them a good fight. I think that we, but they beat us. And I would say they beat us pretty soundly. And we did keep up for a while, but that was because we had two lifelines from two of the fourth graders that were on our team, sort of. They could each answer, just help us with one answer. So it wasn't what I'd call, we played second of two. But it was a lot of fun, and the kids were really fired up. And I think they're undefeated, but we'll be ready for next year, I guess. But congratulations to the fourth grade team for beating us soundly. The same day, I actually was at the Shark Tank at Smoky Row with Ms. Pickett's class, and I was a shark. And it was really cool that students had come up with entrepreneurial ideas and were pitching their business to us. And then we chose, you know, whether we wanted to invest in that. And luckily, we had play checks that we could like pay as much as, you know, our money was unlimited. And I was able to buy into a business of RC cars that would be used to help people that were like in an earthquake or in small confined spaces to get them medical supplies or food and water through these little cars that could drive in the little cracks and get there. So I thought that was clever. And so I put some, I put some money and investment into that. Also, I had a team of kids that designed headphones that also had text, email, and a whole lot of GPS and stuff, you know, in the headphones. So if you're out walking and got lost, you could actually find your way back home. So I thought that was clever. But I did have a colleague help me with the last business, which was a kind of a designer dog treat company. So I conferred with my partner, Jim Dandy, and he was very interested in being part of that business. And so we invested in that. It was a lot of fun. So a lot of cool things going on. Teachers are so creative in what they do to help the kids. One thing I attended was orchestra, both sessions of the orchestra concert this year. And it's pretty amazing to listen to the beginners and just watch them go all the way up to our most advanced orchestra because you can see the growth in the musicians as they go up. But I witnessed something that I don't think I've ever seen before. When Abby Ko was a soloist, and she's just incredible. And she played kind of like a duet with the rest of the orchestra. And they would just go back and forth and dip in and dip out. And it was flawless, and it was amazing. And Dr. Harmon and I were both sitting together, and we just looked at each other like, I've never seen anything like this before in my life. It was so incredible. And then they followed that up with their competition pieces that they did for the state. state. And wow, we are just fortunate to have such great musicians. That was, that was huge. Also, I know several people have attended our, the musical, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. And, and it was pretty fascinating. They, because the auditorium's under construction, they did it in the gym. And, and we got to give kudos to those guys up there in the booth because they were able to transform the gym into a Broadway stage. And, and I got to tell you, there was over 130 light changes. There was just a lot of, a lot of things going on. And the orchestra, the band that played the music for the program was professional. And they were all students. And it was just an amazing production. And the kids were having a lot of fun. There's actually several middle school kids that were part of the cast. So to the cast, the crew, to the directors, it was just an amazing, amazing show. And they had four, four different shows of that, and it was a lot of fun. Also went to the closing choir concert that was in the same venue. And, and one of the cool things about that is how inclusive our choral department is. Students from every, every walk of life are involved in choral music. And, and because it was in the gym, the other choirs were in the back in the bleachers and they were cheering each other on. And, and it was really cool to see how supportive they were of each other, of course, with the, the rest of the, the audience that was there too as well. So a lot of, lot of music going on. Also, as part of the fundraising for the Carmel Youth Assistance Program, we did a staff, there was a staff challenge that whoever donated the most money to the Youth Assistance Program would get a, a grill-out lunch by Dr. B. So, so the winner was the Clay Center Elementary Comets. And so I, I was able to grill about 90 burgers and cheeseburgers. And we had a nice picnic lunch for, and it turned out to be a beautiful day, so everybody was able to eat outside. And congratulations to that, that school for, for being so generous. And then last but not least, I attended the Carmel Education Foundation Scholarship Night. And, and it was really special to sit and listen to presenter after presenter of people who are, had donated and, and gotten a, you know, a foundation down so that they could give an award each year in memory of their loved ones. Or, and then there was, of course, the military ones. And then there were different corporate awards, that sort of thing. But it was really great to hear the different stories behind, you know, and a lot of these have been going on for years and years and years. And, and to hear those stories and the tribute. And what I shared with the graduates that night was that these folks had chose to invest in them. You know, they're investing in the senior class. They don't know these kids. They're investing in them and they're doing that to honor someone that they loved or someone that's special to them or a cause that is special to them. And I shared with the graduates that now it's your job to make good on that investment, but also to, to notice that they're paying it forward and that they may have that opportunity sometime also to pay it forward. So it was pretty, pretty special night there as well. I'll pick up the pace here, but in the world of sports, boys track and field, girls lacrosse, girls tennis, all one sectionals last week. Boys lacrosse is in the state quarterfinals and is the number two seed in the tournament. And we'll see how that goes. Girls track and field advanced 24 individuals to the regional on Tuesday, tomorrow. And they look like they'll be a top five contender at the state meet if all goes well. Boys golf is ranked in the top five all season long and they're in the toughest sectional in the state. So the first mission will be try to get out of that sectional. The baseball open sectional play this weekend in Noblesville. Softball open sectional play tonight, as you heard, one of the kids was playing softball tonight. We couldn't be here tonight in Fishers. And then, and just kind of just looking at our athletic program, as of the winter sports, Carmel High School is currently ranked number one in the nation by MaxPreps for the best high school athletic program in the nation. So final results of that will be released in the, in the late July, early August after all the spring sports are done. But again, the kids have been doing a great job this year and have them in, in the mix. Finally, my bell ringer. And, and my bell ringer is it's graduation week. So the, the big finish is on the way. Ceremony set for Thursday night at the state fairgrounds, starting at 7:00 PM. For people that can't join us in person, we're going to be streaming the ceremony on the Carmel Clay Schools Facebook page and the CHTV YouTube page. So there'll be opportunities on both of those. Kind of fired up about this year's class because this is my senior year. These kids were freshmen my first year. And so I was wandering around with them in the hallways, trying to find my way around Carmel High School. And so they've, they've been an incredible class. It's been, gone through a lot and couldn't be more proud of them. So my bell ringer is the class of 2022. Got to cross that line on Thursday night. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Beresford. Upcoming meetings on May 25th is the last day for students. All Carmel Clay School offices will be closed on Memorial Day. Of no, our central office does move to a 410 work schedule after Memorial Day through July. All Carmel Clay School offices will be closed on June 20th or Juneteenth. And our next regular board meeting is June 27th. May have a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor, media adjourned.